As I said, I'm the Chair of the Civil Service Commission. And I just wanted to come personally on behalf of the Civil Service Commission to say how excited we are to have Officer Sapp. He came into his interview, and I can only tell you that his poise and humility and knowledge of police-- he aced the test. You're so right. He aced the test. And I've been doing this for a couple of years now. We, all three of us, were really, really excited to put him at the top of the list of officers we interviewed. So I had to come on behalf of the Commission, be in to the wonderful borough of Norbert.
Thank you.
I'd like to invite Officer Sapp up and his mother. All right, we get the honor of swearing them in. Would you like to hold the Bible? All right. Can you raise your right hand and put your left hand on the Bible? Read after me. I, Casey Sapp--
I, Casey Sapp.
Do solemnly swear--
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support, obey, and defend--
That I will support, obey, and defend--
The Constitution of the United States--
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania--
And the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania.
And I will discharge the duties of my office--
And I will discharge the duties of my office--
With fidelity.
With fidelity.
Congratulations. If you guys would like to take a moment to take some pictures, take a picture. I don't know if anybody to memorialize a moment. Just take a moment. Yeah, it's a big day. All right. All right. Whatever you want to do. Here, Chief, can I take a picture? You should go. Okay. Stand on the chair. Thank you so much. Welcome. Next up is a little bittersweet for me. As most of you know, our friends at the American Family Market, at the American Family Market, will be leaving us at the end of this month. And they've done so much for this borough in the almost 60 years that they've been here that I thought it appropriate to issue a mayor's proclamation in their honor. So if you like, whoop, here we go. I'd like to read the-- oh, that was-- I'd like to read the proclamation. Whereas the American Family Market, often referred to as the AFM, was started by Paul and Angela Bobo in 1965, and they were later joined in working at the market with Joe Kelly and Gina Bobo. Whereas the American Family Market will be closing at the end of June 2023. Whereas the AFM has served the borough of Norbert and surrounding communities for almost 60 years. Whereas the AFM has employed dozens of Norbert kids, including such prominent members of our community as Judge Sam Quinn, members of the Daly, Gallagher, and Famaletti families, among so many others, allowing them to develop a strong work ethic and the value of caring for the community. Whereas over the years, the AFM regularly delivered groceries to the elderly and those without transportation, thereby easing the lives of so many in the area. Whereas the AFM never let anyone leave their market hungry and even allowed many to pay for the groceries at a later date when money was available. Whereas the AFM made among the best hoagies in the world, bringing joy to the young and young at heart alike on a daily basis. Whereas the AFM had the best turkeys for Thanksgiving and the most delicious ingredients made so many holiday gatherings so special. Whereas the AFM helped many other local businesses over the years by providing storage space, necessary supplies, and even an area of the market to begin to grow shift another loved local business in the borough. Whereas the American Family Market made everyone who entered feel like they were family with a warm greeting and caring conversation. I therefore now, Andrea Doyt, Mayor of Norbert, PA, do hereby proclaim Friday, June 23rd, 2023, to be American Family Market Celebration Day in Norbert, PA. And I declare it. We should all go in and let them know how much they mean to us. Let them know how much we love you guys. We will miss you, and you will, for generations, stories of the AFM will travel throughout the borough. And we wish you love and the best. So-- All right, thank you. We wish you the best.
The borough is like Jack's story.
Yes, absolutely. Take care.
You're so welcome. This is so long.
Thank you.
Always. Thank you for the honor.
You make it easy to love you guys. John, don't be strangers.
Are the boos?
Andrea, do you want to keep it in the forward?
Yes. Yeah, let's keep it in the forward.
Oh, yes.
So let's keep it clean there. Perfect. Yeah. All right.
Thank God for your hard work.
Oh, it's it.
Thank you, everybody.
It's our pleasure. You need-- You got it? Need help?
You're going to answer, and I'll move ahead.
Stop from destroying the floor. At least one more time, please.
Thank you.
Okay. And that's it for my report.
All right. Well, our next item of business is the Consent Agenda.
Public comment.
Sorry. Next thing to do is public comment, which is way up here. Let's-- does anybody-- Public comment is three minutes. Does anybody in the room wish to make a public comment? From row, in the second row, anyone make a comment? Public comment? Okay. Is like now in the room? I don't think-- I don't anticipate anybody online who can make a quick comment. Public comment? You wish to make a public comment? You're here just in time. Okay, our public comment is closed. Now let's move on to the Consent Agenda.
I move that our council approved the Consent Agenda items A through D.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Discussion. All right, we're moving on to Consent Agenda items H through D. All those in favor? Any opposed? All right, it's unanimous. Next, our action item, 09A Hazard Mitigation Plan.
I move that we approve Resolution 2023-09 to adopt the Punishment to Montgomery County Hazard Mitigation.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Discussion. All right, we're moving on to Consent Agenda items H through D. All those in favor? Any opposed? All right, it's unanimous. Next, our action item, 09A Hazard Mitigation Plan.
I move that we approve Resolution 2023-09 to adopt the Punishment to Montgomery County Hazard Mitigation.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right. Alan, tell us about the Hazard Mitigation Plan.
So real quick, in order for the borough to receive those disaster funding, we actually had to have a Hazard Mitigation Plan in place. So Montgomery County was kind enough to do a countywide plan, and they have actually passed it along to all the new cities across Montgomery County, like providing us with a plan that we can adopt in order to be eligible to receive funding in the event of a disaster. It also has initiatives in there to reduce the risk of hazard, which I think the borough is already working on, storming on managing other initiatives. So that's all that the resolution is doing, is adopting that plan.
All right. Discussion?
Dylan, is this a plan that the Emergency Management Coordinator should be involved with?
At this point, because the plan's already been passed, feedback-- no feedback, but I guess it would be good for them to have a thought.
Be aware of?
To be made aware of, I guess. Yeah. Which, that would be John's.
That would be, yes.
Yep.
All right. Seeing no further discussion, let us vote on Resolution 2023-09 to adopt the Montgomery County Hazard Mitigation Plan. All those in favor? It's unanimous. 09B-- Green Building and so on.
A motion to advertise the Green Building 5A and 5B zoning tech amendment.
Second?
Second.
Okay. Jean? John, do you want to lead us through?
Sure. Let me, I guess I'd, for everyone's knowledge, and try to bring everybody up to speed, I'll try to give an overview of, I guess, my sense of the evolution of this ordinance today. I will turn it over to Mr. Bressi just to correct anything that I might say that is incorrect or if he wants to add to. This is an ordinance sometime in the making, but also in some respects still in evolution. Much of what's in here has been something that our concepts have known and discussed by the Planning Commission, but not really discussed in the level of detail to level of ordinance. Ideas such as the green building zoning or rebuilding bonus concepts, the ideas of allowing the 5B, well, apartment buildings in the 5B, those have been discussed by the Planning Commission for some time, but again, have not been put into ordinance language and fine tune. There were other concepts that were known through the Planning Commission, but were not discussed by the Planning Commission at public meetings or reached to reach a consensus. For example, the application of rebuild zoning to allow apartment or mixed-use buildings at 36 feet in the 5A. That was not discussed by them until recently. I believe there were meetings on that last night and earlier in this month, although the concept was something that they had thought about, that they'd made known that they hadn't discussed that. There were also items that were presented, including more from Montgomery County Planning Commission, that were always known, needed to be added to the zoning code to correct some of the conflicts when we passed our SADO code or to essentially do some cleanups. A number of those items were determined to be important related to the definition and the terminology that would apply to the other aspects of this ordinance, things related to frontages and build outs, so a lot of definitional terms. But also bicycle parking is something I think we need to discuss that, we'll move to tonight, to sort of clean up and add the terminology that is desired. There are also concepts in this ordinance that are still evolving that have come out of discussions between the Planning Commission, presentations of the potential projects at 714 Montgomery Avenue and the desire to preserve the Price House on that property and 230 Haverford Avenue. Special meetings called discussed that concept that was, again, discussed last night, but really no discussion by the Planning Commission related to, as I'm aware of, the exact language that needs to be made to have those projects be viable with Council and Planning Commission desire those to move forward. So all of that is combined in here. And I would say the three main concepts are that this ordinance would allow apartment buildings in the 5A at four feet, 45 feet tall, sorry, four stories, 45 feet tall.
In 5A?
5A.
5B?
5B, and that is--
Yes, 5B, 5B, four stories, 45 feet tall. And again, there, that's the height there today, it's just not the apartment building use, correct me if I'm wrong. But in order to have that, you would have to obtain these green building bonus standards. And we'll get to those in a second. For 5A, this would allow certain buildings to be converted to apartment buildings as long as that building would preserve a historic-- no, historic resource, a contributing resource, is the correct term, at that apartment building. And that would only apply as presented, and this is some language I amended that needs to be reviewed, if the building does not have a frontage on Haverford Avenue, Forest Avenue, or North Norbert Avenue north of Haverford Avenue. And of course, there is language already related to apartment buildings on the corners of Windsor Avenue that are under a different standard. So again, I believe it's Essex Avenue, that this could apply to as well as south of Haverford Avenue. This doesn't mean you can rip down a building and put up an apartment. The purpose of this ordinance is to say, if you're preserving the contributing resource, which means you cannot, unless you get a certificate of appropriateness, demolish that building or even expand that building so it looks different from the right-of-way, otherwise it'd be a violation of our historic ordinance. So if you had an existing building and you were able to preserve that contributing resource, you would be able to use this to apply to have it as an apartment building, assuming you meant those frontage requirements are not located there. So I wanted to make sure everyone knew we're not saying you can just tear down a building or even expand a building upward, because then you're not preserving that contributing resource. So it's very limited in that regard and ability to develop. That's something that's new. There is also language that allows height increases for mixed-use buildings along Haverford Avenue, and I think it's just one-sided Haverford Avenue. By also going through that green building standard that you would have to meet those requirements. And the idea is that those green building standards are not something that we can force people to do, but they would be bonuses. There are, if you're willing to build your building as a green building according to this criteria, you are allowed to have that additional height. In addition to that height, there is some language proposed related to the amount of smaller 550 apartments that need to be located, and there has to be a setback third floor above a certain height. That's detailed in here. So that is, I think, the three most major aspects of the ordinance. As far as the green building conditions that would need to be met-- I'm going to move for a second. Find it. Which also, the green building standards would also apply to accessory dwellings, which is something the Planning Commission wanted to have added. It's a little bit, it's slightly different because you're not building additional height bonuses, but if you are going to have an accessory dwelling unit, which is an ordinance that Council passed previously, you would have to use these standards as well. And the green building standards are that although in substantially improved proportions of a proposed building to be constructed, would have to use the most revised versions of the International Energy Conservation Code for all those uses sought. That's something that we cannot require today under the Construction Code. But again, this is a bonus. They don't have to do it, but if they want to do it, we can then tell them that they have to do it according to this standard. If they want that green building bonus standard, they'd have to do utility hookups installation for storage that are not natural gas, propane, oil, or other fossil fuels. Those would be prohibited, except that they needed it for an emergency backup generator. The third thing would be that they would have to, unless electricity, heating, cooling, similar systems should be provided from onsite renewable resources, if those systems are reasonably viable considering the characteristics of the site and the project. And I added that sort of objective definition at the bottom. Again, the idea is, you know, we can't have somebody, you know, force them to install solar panels if it's not going to work, or geothermal, if it's going to cost them a couple million dollars to try to get that. If it's not reasonable, then they can't, but they're encouraged to do so as part of that bonus. They should be required to obtain all of their electricity from 100% renewable energy providers, of which are out there in the Commonwealth. There had been talk in prior meetings that Norbert Borough actually had decided to take part in a potential case or an application to see if the boroughs were able to enroll in a community choice aggregation program. If that does happen and that is the case, it'd be a requirement, if a borough chooses to have that program, that all the users on that property also have to be involved in that program. And again, that's a situation where the borough, they do enroll in that community choice aggregation program, if you're allowed to, essentially all of the properties would be opted in, and it'd be up to the property owners to opt out. And they would not be allowed to opt out for that segment. Additionally, they would have to file a restricted covenant against the property that would be filed of record, which would prevent them from saying they're going to do it, doing it for a year, and then putting in, you know, the gas stoves or the oil tanks. We would have a covenant that says they can't do that, that would be enforceable by the borough. There would also be electric vehicle charging stations required for these 25% parking spaces or double the amount of charging stations that are required under the SADO, whichever square. So those are the standards that are there today for green building. In line with that, there are a number of definitional changes that are being made that were recommended by the Montgomery County Planning Commission to address some of issues that have arisen in the past, and again, that are in line with this ordinance being done. There are some cleanups where things have been removed from zoning because they now appear in the new SADO or our Streets and Sidewalks chapter, for example. There's about three places in the code that talk about how the height of trees to extend over into a right-of-way, and now I think only the Streets and Sidewalks chapter would apply. We also provided a new provision that was running to some issues related to potential traffic concerns about shrubs and bushes being adjacent to the sidewalk, sort of along the corner, but growing up so high that you weren't able to actually see what was going around. And there wasn't anything really in our code that was able to regulate that. And that was something that was proposed. I proposed to move it to the actual Streets and Sidewalks chapter because, again, it's going to grow, it's going to be maintained, it's not really a zoning issue, it's more of a Streets and Sidewalk issue. Bicycle parking standards. When we adopted the SADO, we adopted bicycles placement standards, spacing standards, but not actually number standards. So what was presented here is a chart that requires bicycle parking to be provided and the numbers of how many bikes need to be installed with the development, and there's definition, short-term bicycles and long-term bicycle parking. So, you know, for visitors or if there's somebody that do anticipate those bikes being there for a longer time, I think we should discuss those. And then there are some changes also for parking credits being able to be provided in 5B. Right now, the code provides for the 300-block Meeting House to be given parking credits. A portion of that is not in 5B, so open that up to 5B as well. So those are sort of the overall changes. Mr. Bressi, I'm not sure if you had any highlights that you wanted to point out for the Planning Commission. The thought would be that if Council wanted to move forward with this ordinance at this time, it would then have to go back to the Planning Commission for a formal Act 247 review, where they could make a recommendation, they could make recommendations for changes, and the same would be for the County Planning Commission. It would go to them for them to review, see if they would recommend any changes, if they'd recommend ordinance. It would then come back before you to see if you'd like to adopt the ordinance in July as is, or whether or not you'd like to incorporate some of those changes, I would say. If those changes or recommendations from the Planning Commission's are substantive changes, there would be a need to re-advertise and re-submit the ordinance with those substantive changes. So it will go back to the Planning Commission's for formal reviews and for hopefully formal letters related to the ordinance. And with that, Mr. Bressi, I'm not sure if we gave you anything you'd like to--
Thank you. Actually, I'm here today to say thank you about the market. I thought it was pretty hoagies.
That work.
Thank you for that. First of all, Mr. Walker, that was a terrific summary. I really don't think anything I could say to correct it or amend it. I'd like to say that we have a brother who really represents more, better part of the year's work from the Planning Commission on these various topics, that's why there's so much. And that Mr. Walker's right, for the most part, we hadn't really looked at specific code language until our meeting last night. And code language itself is really coming together, I suppose, over the last 10 days. And it's Herculean effort by Mr. Walker to do that. And on the Planning Commission, a lot of this, what you have to do is sort of practice by my, I mean, our newest Playoff Commissioner happens to be a great code writer. So a lot of their work to reflect this in what you have. I don't have anything to add to what Mr. Walker said, but I did do a little research into bicycle parking, so when you get to that topic, I'd like to make a comment.
So again, I'd like to just highlight some of the more substantive changes that were made that were not on the version that was sent to the Planning Commission last night. This is a result of additional follow-ups and some minor needs as well related to what was being presented. And one of the first issues I would point out, which is under subsection A, related to the apartment buildings with a maximum height of four stories in the 5B zoning district, there was some concern that if you had multiple primary buildings on the lot, there's already conditional use to address that. And this is slightly different. That other provision relates to if you wanted to build two new buildings or multiple buildings on the lot, you'd have to go through that conditional use here. But this provision is presuming and is only applicable when there is a contributing resource on the property. The concept is they're going to preserve the contributing resource, but also use the remainder of that property to build a new building. And so you'd have two buildings on a lot. And I think of note is 714 Montgomery, the Price House and proposed other developments. And the way that property is laid out, it's not a corner property because there is a different portion of the corner, but based upon the definitions, there are two frontages because I think it'd be considered a through lot. So there was some concern about having to go through two conditional use processes. And it was proposed to provide the criteria of the conditional use process as if there was two new buildings, which was found in 401C, into this ordinance section, which is 301C, subsection six, to sort of not have that duplication. But in doing so, there were some proposed changes, which I noted under subsection G, primarily dealing with the fact that you have a pre-existing building there on the site. And there was, I believe, some concerns that the frontage requirements of both properties would not be able to be addressed. And essentially, this ordinance says that the pre-existing building, which would be a contributed resource, would dictate what the frontage would be for the purposes of the development processes here. Now practically speaking, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Bressi, this was something that was discussed, I think, with the 714 related to trying to make a plan that was agreeable work. And they were of concern that the frontage along Meeting House and also along Montgomery, they wouldn't be able to have sufficient parking along Meeting House, but they believed that this would address that. that this would address that issue. But still, you have the conditional use, you still have the preservation of the resource and building standards there. So that was something new, has not been reviewed by the Planning Commission, sent to Mr. Bressi a few hours ago. I wanted to point that out as a change. One of the items that I received some feedback on was related to, and so we're moving into the next item, was related to the 36 feet in the 5A zoning district for mixed-use buildings, the additional height for the mixed-use building. And the, there was a language presented that a minimum of 60% of the building width of that third story shall be set back at least 10 feet from the front facade. And that set that area from the front facade shall serve as a functional outdoor space that's accessible from the adjacent interior space. That was the language that was proposed. And what was, I believe, read or interpreted is that that space then would need to be a balcony, if not a shared outdoor space, but I think most likely would be balconies. And the idea is then, as it's read, technically it'd be a 10-foot balcony. And if that's something that's desired, I guess the standard from what I'm being told is a sort of 6-foot set-back area. So larger balconies, based upon the way this code is drafted. There was some proposals informally from, you know, related to the 2/3 development of maybe a minimum standard of 50% of the building width with a 6-foot set-back being more consistent with the balcony. Again, I didn't put that language in there, because this one, the language that here was presented by the Planning Commission, and it's really morbid design. It's not a, you can't make this project work. But that was just something that was wanted to be noted. The next item I'd point out, that I actually probably not in the versions before you, is I drafted a revision, and then I received some more information about the discussions from the Planning Commission last night. And under subsection D, I had originally thought that the idea was that if you have an existing building that exceeds 65 feet in width in the 5A zoning district, that there was a desire to take that to a conditional use hearing, where there'd be certain standards that would have to be shown at the conditional use hearing. However, it's my understanding that the recommendation really was that if you have that issue with the 65-feet width facade, it's much more desirable due to the flexibility that the Planning Commission would desire more flexibility than any applicant would desire more flexibility in the subjective standards of what looks good, breaking up the building to not have a massive wall through the land development process and through the Sado or subsequent land development areas. Because then council, if needed to, could waive certain provisions related to those standards. And those standards are related to materials, textures, colors, signage dimensions, window arrangements, architectural orientation, you know, how often the breakups need to be. There was discussion of 45 feet, I believe. So I believe it was determined by the Planning Commission that it'd be preferable to just have that whole process done through land development. Now, certainly, if you're using that 65-foot version and doing 36-feet height, you're going to have to come to a conditional use hearing, and they're probably going to be showing architectural limitations during the conditional use hearing. But at that conditional use hearing, if it was approved for conditional use and then went through land development, there still would be ways for the Planning Commission to make changes to how it looks. And if they're in agreement with it, and council's in agreement with it, you could waive any of the requirements for those facades that you didn't feel that needed to be included. Mr. Bressi, is that sort of your understanding of the discussion last night?
Yes.
So that would be a change from what was presented to you. So essentially, I took out that provision. Instead of having the conditional use, it would be part of a subdivision land development application to have that criteria. The other item I would note, we talked about the apartment buildings and how that was drafted to the locations, the way that could be done, the preserve of the contributing resource already. The definitions, a number of definitions were added. Those are all the definitions that were recommended from Chloe Moore, the planner of the Borough, that are needed for this ordinance, to sort of make this ordinance work. I added some language related to the accessory buildings using the green building standards. There was a discussion with the Planning Commission based upon comments and questions that were presented to them related to whether or not if someone wanted to retrofit the accessory dwelling unit. So if you had a garage or a poolhouse now that had a gas hookup, would we require that gas hookup to be taken out if they were converting that accessory dwelling unit into, that poolhouse into an accessory dwelling unit for someone to live there for a matter of accommodation? And the Planning Commission, I believe, felt that that was too overbearing for them to do so. So if you have a pre-existing building that has utility hookups using natural gas, propane, oil, or fossil fuels, you would not be required to rip them out and then put in something that's electric-only or clean renewable energy. However, if you were building something new, completely new, or I'd say even or new in addition, where you don't have to rip anything out, it would still apply. And I believe that was at the recommendation of the Planning Commission as well. And we want to make that clear in case that issue came up in the future. Then, before we get to bicycle parking, everything else, there were some items that were removed and moved to other areas in the code, although there were no substantive changes that were made, they're just found elsewhere in the code or there are duplicates in the code. Bicycle parking, I think a point of discussion from what I'm hearing would be the long-term bicycle parking spaces and what that number should be. It was originally presented that the long-term bicycle spaces, and so we're all talking about the same thing, let me read those definitions. So bicycle parking spaces have short-term and long-term definitions. A short-term bicycle parking is bicycle parking primarily intended for bicyclists who need bicycle parking for three hours or less. And for three hours or more, it's long-term parking, and if it's three hours or more, it must be fully protected from the weather, according to the definition. So there are different standards for how many short-term bicycle parking spaces a new building being developed needs to have versus long-term bicycle parking spaces. And for residential buildings, if there's three or more residential units, so this won't impact, you're single-family house or twin house, but if it's three or more being developed, and again, this is for a land development process, there isn't, we're not going to go around the borough and make sure everyone's got parked, but if your grandfather didn't, we're not going to make you have bicycle parking spaces. But if you're going to build a new building, it goes through land development, the standard was one per every six unit for short-term bicycles. And it was presented at the greater of either two per unit or one per bedroom for long-term bicycle spaces. Received some feedback, and I believe there was discussions about this months ago, related to the standards of the amount of space that's required for a bicycle space under the Sado, which has been in the Sado, and these numbers might result in a large amount of room on these, in these buildings that are dedicated to bicycle parking. And whether or not that's realistic, to have that much bicycle parking spaces inside ground levels of buildings. The Philadelphia standard is one for every three unit for long-term bicycle parking spaces. So I put that in there to discuss this concern. But again, the original language was the greater of two per unit or one per bedroom. So again, if you had a one-bedroom apartment, you would have two bicycle parking spaces for that. If you had three bedrooms, you would have three bicycle parking spaces, because it's two per unit or one per bedroom, the greater amount. Otherwise, it's just one for every three units, so it's less. So if you have three one-bedroom apartments, you need to have one space for each three. Other than that, I think everything was substantively what was before the Planning Commission. Obviously, the Planning Commission did not get to all of this yet, and again, they still need to get through some of the things that were before them last night. But those are the items I want to point out as new changes and revisions to what was previously associated with. This can be amended before advertisement. And really, the advertisement at this point is what are we going to present if it's approved to go to both the Planning Commissions of Norworth Borough and Montgomery County for them to review and provide feedback. Again, we could then take that feedback, it'll then come before you, to say, well, we want to make additional changes, it has to be re-advertised, re-submitted, or you can move forward with what you have and say, thank you, no thanks, or those are good recommendations. Let's follow up with another ordinance after that and make those corrections and let's get these on the books. That's up for council to determine at a later time. And obviously, you can't make that decision now until you hear what the feedback is from both of those agencies. Discuss.
All right. I propose that we start with things that are not bicycle parking, and then move on to bicycle parking. So if people have questions or concerns about other elements of the...
I can ask a question.
It's the legislation. Go ahead, John.
I was curious about section L14. We have some streets that are, it's a place that's on this road. Cannot have multiple, cannot be owned, contributing resources that frontage on Havreford, Forest, North, Norworth, and I'm wondering why, I guess I'm wondering why Essex, it's not mine, but...
My concern was there would only be one building at that point in time that that provision would apply to. And I was concerned that that would be a spot somewhere in their program. Based upon my review of, and I'm not a planner, obviously, but looking at the map, if you excluded Essex, you've excluded essentially everything except south of Hefra. Well, essentially, it's, in order for a code to be enforceable, you can't, it should apply to more than one property. And this hasn't, so it applies to more than just one property that enters there. That's it.
If we excluded buildings that have a frontage on Essex, there would be only one property that fit that.
Okay, but I mean, it's with the list of buildings on Forest, North, Norworth, and Havreford, as well as Essex, it's all one building. It's an entire...
That do not have a frontage on those. It's saying if it's in 5A and historical and a contributing resource and does not frontage on this street.
Yes, and so I'm wondering, why does that not include the list of buildings that it does not have a frontage on Havreford, Forest, North, Norworth, or Essex? No, I'm just, Essex seems like it's the same as those other streets in that, in the way that we have, you know, the frontages as being.
Sure. And again, I think this is more of an issue for the Planning Commission, but one, there is right now, and obviously Havreford and Windsor Corners have already been addressed, so essentially you're dealing with mid-Essex. One, it's not in the immediate downtown. Two, there's already, I think, there's a condo building, not apartment building there already. And three, I think just, it's more residential in nature than the rest of the downtown area. That was the concept.
Okay. No, I just, it seems to me like it's, Erin mentioned the word downtown, as mostly first-floor retail or medical offices or businesses of some sort. I was just curious what the, for not having that being on the list.
There is the Brenton Hall apartments, which are beautiful on Essex, which are...
But I think our city code would be requiring anything now that you put on Essex to have first-floor, that would have to be mixed-use building, at present, right? So this just makes a change in Essex from what we currently consider as being a plot that, while it may have some great other than, you know, apartment, that we just, I guess it's a question of whether it's apartment or downtown or not. I guess I think of it that way, but this suggests that it might not be that way. So I wondered how much...
I didn't mean to make this, make the suggestion. Essentially, it was, in my non-professional planner view of looking at what would have the least impact on the downtown and what would make the least change, essentially based upon buildings that were there already. Again, noting that you're not going to be able to rip out a building and build apartment building, because you have to preserve the contributive resource, which would be that building already on this.
Yeah, I mean, this would be converting, okay?
Correct.
Yeah.
So did you want to comment?
Sure, thank you. First of all, this is not a provision we've seen, because the solicitor identified this issue. The dynamics of it. Another thought to consider, Mr. Walker, is Planning Commission tried to rattle with the notion that while we want vital downtown, which means having vital ground floors, the market is telling us right now that it's really vital everywhere, particularly the outer edges of it. That's why all of Windsor Avenue, the longer you have, the apartment buildings would be fun, because it seemed to be the least marketable for the purposes of it. So another consideration, if you'd like this document applied to one property, would be to apply this to Windsor Avenue, where you have these modern used to a building right now in the metro, into a company's office building, see the post office building. Those would be impacted by this, if you extended this to Windsor Avenue. It would then basically offer the opportunity for those buildings to be converted to apartments or residential, in order to preserve those resources, which seems just personally to be fine.
So the idea is if you wanted to preserve the resource, you could do so. If you wanted to demolish it and get just the appropriateness, you'd still be able to apply under the conditional use criteria that's already in the code right now. That is, that's an alternative for council to consider. That's something that, Mr. Bressi, obviously, I'm, you can't speak for the Planning Commission, but if that's something that you would like to make now, it might save a potential change down the block. And that, we can make that change easily.
Do you want to be an improvement? So what you get to Windsor Avenue instead of...
I don't really know, I don't think that's, I don't think that it could be an interesting policy to us. I don't think it really talks, I don't think that addresses what I was talking about, but it's an interesting, it's a good point in and of itself.
I think that the concept is, though, to answer your question of why that area, and is the idea of what is crucial for mixed-use downtown. And the Planning Commission has already made determinations of that they'd be more okay with apartments on Windsor Avenue. So if there's a desire just to have additional apartments through a different process on Windsor, and then exclude Essex Avenue from this ability, that change could be made. And it sounds like that might be more desirable by the Planning Commission, once it goes back from there.
Did you have more?
I'm talking about, I, this is a very, I mean, I'm really trying my best to understand. This is a very, also, this is a large set of very complex changes that are extremely difficult to grapple with, and so you'll have to spend a lot of time lying back and forth to see which sections of the code are being amended. It's really, it's like hard to put your head around, actually. So I still don't really fully understand, because I thought that, I thought that the properties that are listed here are the ones that are, that are being exempted, right? Like if, like, if it's listed here, it's being exempted.
You cannot have, you could not, you could not have them for...
Yeah. So that's fine. I guess I would like to ask you about section A, what the fundamental, I think the Planning Commission's talked about it a long time, so I think it would help them address what the fundamental policy purpose of section A is, so we can know what it's intended to do. Because you mentioned something about avoiding two different conditional use areas, John.
Yes.
I totally follow.
So... So right now, the, in the 5B zoning districts, you are able to have more than one building on a lot. So again, the basis of zoning is you have a principal building and you can have accessory buildings. But there was code amendments made a few years ago that says you could have multiple principal buildings on a lot in the 5B through a conditional use process. And that conditional use process was found under section 401(c) of our code. And the criteria, all, 90% of that criteria is found in that subsection 8. And that, this criteria that was drafted by the planning commission for the idea of the concerns of addressing two principal buildings on a lot would also apply to two principal buildings when one of them is pre-existent, meaning one of them is contributing resources there already. So how are we going to develop that lot and have two main buildings? So instead of having 401(c) stand alone, have to seek the conditional use process under those criteria that are brought in to this one, so it's all, you only have to apply the conditional use now under 301(c) if this passes and not 301(c) and 401(c). But there are some changes because the differences between 401(c) is that you're going to have two new buildings, three new buildings. But with this one, there's going to be a building that you have to keep on that lot, that contributing resource. And how that impacts your ability to develop that lot with that pre-existing building for some, for frontages wise. You're not going to change the frontage where that pre-existing building faces. Otherwise, you're limiting it to contributing resources. So there was some language that represented to try to address that. Again, that isn't something that the planning commission has seen yet and would need to consider. But the whole concept is the intent to provide the benefit of allowing there to be an apartment building at four stories to give the benefit and the incentive to keep that, up that contributing resource that's on the property. That contributing resource is allowed to be developed. But to use it for another type of use and maintain that as you be required to do so under the historic district ordinance, but develop the remainder of the property and develop the new building according to those pre-built bonus standards. That is what section A would allow to do. And I can defer to Mr. Grassley if there's more theory or conversations from the planning commission on why they believe that's the concept.
Sure, I mean, you know, zoning districts and their purposes were established before the historic preservation. The theory comes out, the vision from Montgomery Avenue is that always that it would be a more impact on the place for offices, doctors' offices, things like that, locate, generate a certain spread of the jobs. There were special efforts made to discourage apartment buildings or residential because that was seen as a way of sapping that resource right out of the park. That was the idea that I had on the side. Historic district ordinance introduced the priors that sometimes conflict with their requirements. It's pretty conventional to plan it when you create a historic district, you sort of have to go back to reevaluate some of your earlier ideas. And you also have to make sure that you are not creating situations where, because of the historic district, a lot becomes undeveloped or unusual. You have to think about how you intend to date. The owner's right to think about how they manage their property. So those things come into play at this site, asset of Montgomery. And the approach is that, well, first of all, because of the nature of that lot, adaptive, because of the orders of the residential neighborhood, that residential use on the back of that lot is probably about the residences next to residences, it's better than businesses next to residences. So the idea of using the back of that lot for residential to, one, allow the economic value of the property to be captured and to provide a better transition to the residential neighborhood became sort of driving the guidance about that site. The reason the provision is in there for the house not to be converted to commercial is because there are other contributing resources that are commercial buildings that we do not want to create, sort of open the gates that the commercial buildings along there and the residential, of course. So that was the notion that the contributing resource would remain commercial, private office, and that it's appropriate with back part of the lot to be used as an individual residential building so that economic value can be captured, which we want to do, but so that there would be a better transition to the neighborhood. I'm not sure about this consolidation of the conditional uses. I haven't read or thought about that. But one of the things that the advocate's attorney pointed out is this tiny, teeny tiny little wording in the code about how the design of sites with multiple buildings occurs that creates a conflict on that site, which is that when you have multiple buildings on a lot, each building is supposed to have a frontage on the street it faces. And all the metrics about things like the building form and the parking are driven by those frontages. But when you overlap those two buildings on that lot, which was an error in the code, set in a way, the aspects of this that deal with establishing one of the properties as sort of main moment you use for a site plan is really just fixing an error in code that allows them to put their... So that's why understanding what's in the back.
Right, and again, if you were to, I think previously it was drafted as saying you have to comply with the 401(c) criteria. The 401(c) criteria has the double frontage issue because you'd be given two buildings. So it takes everything else from 401(c) that is good and applicable and tweaks that to address that issue.
Mission planning revision, I guess, inspiring. Makes a lot of sense.
Thank you for explaining that. It's complicated. I have one final question, and that's my last one. I was looking at, in section N3, I was curious whether it's, that applies to five... I guess I need to look and see where it's amending, I wasn't sure. Is that, by the way, so section N3, and then section 501(c)(2), I don't know where that is. That applied to say buildings along Havford Avenue in 5A? The ability to have up to a 12-foot wide lobby? Oh, no, in the front of the building.
So section, subsection 3 of that?
Yeah.
Yes, this is language that came from the Montgomery County Planning Commission. And really, it was intended to address a concern of someone that really is an apartment building saying that they're a mixed-use building because of, oh, there you have a gym on the first floor, even though the gym is really just an amenity for the apartment or coffeehouse. And so there's the idea of having the ground floor being able to use only related to the second and third stories for these limited issues. As far as the 40-foot in depth and 12 feet in width, those numbers came from the Montgomery County Planning Commission, I believe.
So this would apply on Havford Avenue?
This would apply in Havford Avenue.
All right, well, I would just...
For any mixed-use building.
So hearing that this came from the planning commission, I would just suggest that we have some existing retail spots. I think they're about 16 feet wide, some of the smaller spots. We put a 12, because we've emphasized so much over the years the importance of the street local experience and having, you know, this consistent rhythm of retail spaces. I think a 12-foot, potentially a 12-foot wide lobby with an elevator right on Havford Avenue is not necessarily something that I'm comfortable contemplating. So I'm hoping to begin to rethink the dimensions, the location. Because that's almost like as wide as some of our storefronts, is what I'm saying. You know, like pushed back a little bit or not quite so wide. I mean, I understand the idea that, you know, that an accessory used to the building that has like a stairwell and some kind of circulation is to be expected. But that's the large in scale of some of our existing spaces.
Yes.
That's all.
I mean, it's interesting because the building that's being proposed on Havford actually has that lobby not on Havford.
Right, yeah, and that's why, that's why I'm curious why we wouldn't really want to allow for this.
And actually, for pretty much the same reason you just described.
Well, they're required to have ground floor retail, so they'd have to figure out some way to... Like, I mean, they wouldn't want to sabotage themselves by having most of the front of the building be a stairway, they have on the ground floor there some retail.
Well, okay, and this came from the planning commission. I think we can rethink whether that really fits in our, you know, our overall planning goals for Havford Avenue. It seems like it right now, that's all.
Yeah, I think the intent was more to say that the only thing, and really, I think this came out of earlier conditions of potential plans for 714 in Montgomery. But I think right now, that provision only reads residential uses are allowed only on the second and third floors only. That's it. And they changed that to dwelling units are allowed only on the second and third floors only. And I guess there's a desire to then specify what is then could be permitted on the ground floor. It doesn't say it has to be that, but that still would be, that that is not what's considered residential. I mean, to be specific, they were proposing a sort of kind of fake retail on the first floor. They were going to need the mixed-use requirement. I said it's 14. Not from an earlier metro. Right. And again, there were some definitional changes that were recommended as a result of that. So this does apply to any mixed-use building in the borough that's a lot of mixed-use buildings. And I think the intent was to address that, I think, with the issue.
Because they're going to argue that they need to have access to their, to their second and third floors.
And they don't want...
They need to have a lot.
And they don't want to run into an interpretation of that, although that is still a residential use on the first floor, assuming there is a desire to clarify that that's not desired, that's not considered residential use.
Well, I'm just saying, in section 3 and section 5, it seems like we contemplate the possibility of up to a 12-foot lobby on Havford Avenue on the first floor. And I'm not sure that that's something that we're going to do, that's all.
Well, certainly 5 talks about specific to the 5A district.
Yeah, that's true. I didn't know if 3 does, 3, what it applies to or not.
Yeah, that applies to everything. But you're right, that 5, this is specific to the 5A district. And it does say that dwelling units on the second and third floor need to have direct access to a street or courtyard through a stairway, vestal, elevator or lot. And again, applies the maximum weight for that vestal lobby, 12 feet along a street front. Be much larger supposedly if it went up to a courtyard in the back, for the stairs.
Okay, well, as long as it repeats my point that I thought for years, we have been very adamant that we want Havford Avenue to have retail on the first floor without big breaks, without parking garage or something, and so I wonder whether we want to permit up to 12 feet of lobby, potentially with an elevator, on Havford Avenue? Because that's very different from the kind of planning goals that we've been articulating for a number of years. You know, I'm not saying there shouldn't be any accessory used to access the second and third floors. There should be, but is that, is that the right scale, 12 feet? Yeah, Todd has thoughts.
I have some chair.
Yeah, sorry, go ahead, Todd. Point of view.
We debate this thing, these things all the time. It's a game of inches, right? So one of the things we observed about Havford Avenue, it's one of the things that makes it work is the number of residential entrances on the street, which creates people coming and going to the upper-level spaces, which adds to the main street. It's one of the conversations we had about the concept of having residential entrance to the concept of 230 Havford, the upper-level spaces. Because most people are no longer people who do their buildings through the street. Changes the circulation. If you measured the proportion of, say, YSA building that side, if you measured the proportion of the building that is devoted to doors, to residential spaces, you would be surprised how much of the frontage is devoted to doors. You'd have to account it. So I don't think the planning commission is generally concerned about residential entrances on the street on Havford Avenue because it's the same thing. I think we think it adds to pedestrian by having. As to the dimension, that's calculated really as, you know, space for double door and spaces that you'd have to have next to it. If you were to reduce that, you'd still pretty much have to have it be six or seven feet if you're to have, you know, a door, a vestal door, an elevator. So really, what we're talking about is six or five or six feet difference. And I, so I don't, I don't know that the planning commission shares that concern. I think the traffic in and out, pedestrian traffic, it's sort of outweighed the loss of retail space. Whereas someone said that the person who's designing the building is going to try to minimize their retail loss, their pressures are to make that as little as possible. So that is not a concern I think the planning commission shares, but that's all I can say.
Thank you. Yeah, I know we have water, drainage, circulation on the ground floor, and we always talk about how nice that is. It creates a nice rhythm, but those doors are like, are five feet, maybe four, five feet. They're not, they're not 12 feet, which is the width of some, it's starting to approach the size of some of our existing retail spaces. So, you know, I don't see any reason why it needs to be quite that large. It seems like double doors and all the, I mean, that's, 12 feet is far in excess of what's necessary to have pedestrian circulation.
It's not required, it's just a matter of...
Anything else, Mr. Shobhan?
No.
Anybody else?
I mean, I'd like to ask Mr. Grassley, in his role as the chair, and I'll speak to the planning commission about the idea of the 10-foot setback being used as a functional outdoor space. If that was, if those dimensions were thought out and what the anticipation was of what that outdoor space would be, whether individual balconies, whether there'd be an outdoor gathering space, 10 feet. Because again, there was some initial feedback of, was that, it seemed like a pretty big gap that would stand out to the case.
Well, that notion came about in two ways. One was many of us went to Havford Avenue for the music festival and stood in the middle of the street and looked, which I had imagined what these buildings would be like. And it felt like, first, I think impulse was, it felt like a one-foot depth or one-foot height setback would be the right ratio for any setback in terms of visual perception of a massive building. We originally bought one foot back and two feet up, so a one-to-two ratio. But when we looked at it on the street, it felt like one-to-one would actually create, would make a difference. It would make the street feel that much more open. So that was the first, the first way that I think you...
So there was an agreement, there was an agreement of 10 feet, that's what?
Yes, I should say, in the planning commission, there's some planning commissioners who feel no setback, but agreed to have some setback. That is sort of a spectrum. So the first was that that was the right ratio to create an urban floor that made the street feel open. The second topic was that those spaces could actually be used as terraces or open spaces adjacent to the property without being nice. We all remember the balconies that were built upon a price out of, correct? Eight years or so. It just seemed too small, you know, it felt like five feet was a little small and squeezed. The 10 feet felt much more generous, livable outdoor space, functional for the adjacent residential unit. So it also felt like it was a better dimension to get in with the space. And we thought that would be really interesting to have the space, you could have tables out and their plants, and we're sitting out there, you know, watching the people on the street. We also, and the third thing we realized was having that setback be consistent would create a kind of uniformity that was not necessary. The constant changes in building profiles is important to Haverford Avenue. So that's why we then introduced the idea that the setback should exist only on half of the site.
Sixty percent.
Sixty percent, okay. These things change. I'm buying sixty percent. And the reason is that we thought gave the, it gave us a requirement that created those sorts of that urban condition, but it also gave the architect the flexibility to determine how they wanted that space to relate to units, to the interior configuration units. They had flexibility. Do they want people to access the space from the side? Or do they want to have access from a more parallel to the street? They'd have a lot of options about how people do that. So ultimately, we thought that was, what will you have as a result, as a clear reform result? And also combines that with a way of providing options, variations in the kind of material, floor lengths, and buildings. It gives us some choices about how to do that. That was our plan, essentially.
We got a, so the council, and I'm of no reason or knowledge of that being a problem. For anyone who's just sort of a commenter on the proposal. I would recommend, based upon prior comment related to apartment buildings, to make that change to exclude Essex Avenue and Haverford Windsor Avenue. I have a why, based upon Mr. Preston's expertise. I can make that change, or in certain instances, you might be in better position than to not be recommended. Potential less change.
Okay. Barbara, did you have your hand up?
No.
Okay, anything else on the non bicycle parking aspects of this?
So far, we're making two, I don't know if we're all agreeing, but we're suggesting two changes so far. We're going to leave the 10-foot setback.
And that's already in there, right?
So that's as is. But we're going to add Essex to the list.
We're going to remove that.
Remove that Essex and Haverford Windsor.
Okay. And then I would be open to reducing six feet. Michelle's suggesting the lobby. It's a simple mistake.
How much part of the planning commission on that?
Are we going to be creating non conformities if we reduce it to six feet? Are there other places that have? It sounds like there's places that already have larger than six feet. Significant number. What do you think?
Actually, I can't think of any outside my head. Usually, the residential entrances are one or a little space, and the size is maybe five.
All right, well, let's try to, let's try to find a number that does not, that reflects what's there. It doesn't create non conformities that reflects the current space count, right?
That was my suggestion.
Okay.
Now, the pedestrian areas are mostly here, five feet to six feet seems like a modern, modern size.
Yeah, but I mean, there's a difference. I mean, I'm not saying it needs to be 12 feet, but new stuff is going to have to potentially be ADA compliant. Whereas right now, they're all walk-ons, right?
That's why I think more generous, six feet.
Do we just want to say six feet on Haverford?
Was it?
We should just randomly.
Because I'm, well, I can tell you that right now, the proposal that is coming out for 230 Haverford has a larger entrance on the courtyard. Right? Has a, has a larger entrance area than I think would be contemplated by this. But it's not on the street, it's on a little courtyard.
That's, that's fine. But my concern is the other buildings on Haverford would also be three-story, and they're placed, presumably also have elevators. So, yeah, I'm just concerned that we're going to have several of these lobbies.
Yeah.
Well, not from them. I think this is going to be their one lobby, right?
Right. They'll have one for, I mean, they'll have one for the, the little gym. They'll have one for the, the side of buildings, kind of. The one stories that they would be, the new building that they would be constructing. And then I don't know what they would do for the other, for the revival space, like that, that area. I'm not sure how they would.
Won't they be connected?
No, there's going to be a courtyard separated.
They won't be connected at all.
I don't think so.
Of course, elevators or court buildings would be, remain the same.
Yeah.
Particularly from the exterior.
Right. They already, I mean, they already have access, so they wouldn't change that. So it would be two new, it'd be the one in the courtyard and then the one for the little gym.
If they did change it, it wouldn't appear changed from the outside.
But the courtyard doesn't apply to this because of that, because they're on Haverford. So you're talking about one.
This is only entrance on Haverford?
Yeah.
The, the, the street, what was drafted for the 12-foot, this is subsection B, which is specific to the 5A district. The maximum width of a vestal or lobby shall be 12 feet along a street frontage.
All right. So I guess that doesn't interfere with what we're seeing.
What? Like, is Haverford Avenue a street project?
Yeah, but I'm saying that the, the, the larger lobby that's in the project we've seen is not facing a street. It is facing a courtyard, which is not a street.
Yeah. Okay.
So I think your, your sense of what change would be.
Okay, yeah, that's what I'm saying. Why not, why not put in the code what we want?
So let's, let's change that to six feet. The planning commission wants to come back and.
I mean, my, my concern is I'm not aware if it does meet ADA compliance standards. You know, if you had to get a gurney, it's there. I don't.
Whatever meets the ADA standard.
Okay, so we just change the language to entrance, which meets ADA standard?
Minimal.
Eighteen minutes of ADA standard?
I mean, we could figure out what that number is.
Yeah.
Put that in there.
Yeah.
As long as I have the whole direction, I think that's sufficient.
Can you think of a, we just follow Chloe and say, where did they get the 12-foot? Because that's what the planning commission recommends. So they obviously have a reason for that. Just have to figure it out. So, yeah, we just got to ask Chloe.
So, I think we'd like to reduce it to ADA compliance.
It's actually building, building code.
Okay. All right, Barbara, bye. So you've already kind of gone over your thoughts.
And I'll recap again. That's really what the original language was presented for long-term bicycle parking. So again, that's bicycle parking for bicycles that are expected to be there three hours or longer, and that need to be protected from the elements. The original language was whatever the greater is of two per unit, so two spaces per unit or one per bedroom. The, the alternative version that was proposed, as stated, is what Philadelphia has, which is one for every three units for long-term parking. The short-term, one for six, remains the same. And the concern, I think there was a concern for both 714 and 230, that based upon the number of units and the number of bedrooms that might be in those units, and based upon the SADA bicycle spacing requirements, how far a bicycle needs to, rack needs to be from another bicycle rack, and also how far that needs to be from doors, columns, and providing clear access to those racks, that you would have significant amount of indoor first-floor covered space dedicated to bicycles. And to require that level for bicycles and the amount that the code would require for vehicles would make it burdensome or troublesome for those properties.
All right. So Todd, do you want to talk about how that number was arrived at, the original two recommendation? And it sounds like you've done some research here.
Actually, I did not. Chloe were doing all that research for us. And, you know, quite frankly, when we, when we debated that, I think it was, it was in February, at that meeting with Jim Spear, Kimberly's at. So we asked them to come out with what they thought, quantitative measures. So it's a, in reality, Chloe had come up with this number, which is in the code, and we asked them about it. And they, they found it was appropriate. So that, you know, in, in objectivity, in all objectivity, that could probably be reevaluated at that point. But the research was done by Chloe. She recommended that as well. So it's a good practice. Now, the other issue about the amount of space that we picked up, that was, that was raised by, by Freddie, whatever he is. We discussed it and looked at it. And when we looked at it, meaning we, we included it, it wasn't so much an issue. But now, seeing your notes today, John, I looked at, I read the SADA, about this to try and figure out why that was a concern. It's one of those things that twists on one word. A twist on the definition of a bike rack. And the definition of a bike rack sort of gives you the, lead you to the assumption that maybe a bike rack is a, is a fixture for one bike. But I think if the definition of a bike rack were changed from a bike to one or more bikes, then the code issue would disappear, because you have a very long bike rack with room for 20 bikes. The standard is you can't put a bike rack within three feet of instructions. Anyone here?
Yeah, we're really trying to establish that Haverford has a bike shop. And so I think through the policy, we really have a chance to do that. And working in tandem with other efforts that we're doing with the Make My Green Way and having that run through Haverford, I think we have, yeah, to me. And the, the cost, I feel like is very low in reality. Just especially talking about the kind of, the way that bike parking is working in those long-term, in the, in the garages. We can fit a lot of bikes in, in the space of one car. So it's such a low cost in terms of space, construction cost. And it's an easy way to really attract a certain demographic to Haverford that prefers to bike, walk, and in transit, have homeless cars. So I would, I would think that if we go back to something like Philadelphia's project, like one.
Four.
One for three, it would be such a huge backward step from what the planning commission had put forward.
I would say more that would attract a certain demographic, it would be a detriment to other demographics. The elderly don't like, or people who are, the disabled, or people who don't, aren't able to like. So it, it's a swap.
I would argue the opposite, that I feel like the more bike spaces you create, you're probably replacing the detrimental effects of cars in terms of parking demand, congestion, road safety, all of those things. So, I don't know.
Let me give everybody a chance to speak at this one.
You knew much more about bikes. You have one that you use all the time. Are these double-decker things? I mean, would anybody even use the upper level?
I think in the SADA, it actually says that it most, like, the majority has to be on ground. Because access-wise, it's, it is easier. But.
I can read the bike rack requirement actually. Bike racks, which is used for short-term, must be securely attached to concrete footings and concrete sidewalk or other comparatively secure concrete surface. Bike racks shall be securely anchored and secured, tamper-proof nuts. It shall be made of wood, stainless steel, weather, and permanent exposure to the elements. Shall be inverted U or post-it ring style. Bike racks should be designed to support the bicycle frame at least two places and allow a frame and wheel to be secured with a U-shaped lock.
Yeah, I was referring to the long-term ones. You wouldn't want double-decker for short-term.
No, no.
We're not actually.
Are you done? Can I take that?
Yes. There are bicycle storage lockers that are anticipated or contemplated. Required long-term bicycle parking spaces shall be located no lower than the first cellar level or the first complete parking level below grade and no higher than the first above-grade level. Access to long-term parking spaces, bicycle parking spaces shall be by ramp or elevator from the street level, no more than one step. Access is provided by an elevator. The interior dimensions shall be no more than 80 inches by 54 inches. For located in a room, a room has to have walls, fencing from floor to ceiling. It will be designed so that the entire room is visible from the entry door. Have motion-activated security lights. Contain bike racks designed to hold bicycles in vertical or horizontal form. Positions, such devices shall allow frame, wheel to lock, U-lock, among security measures. Then there are some dimensions for the actual storage lockers. Let me just go to the definitions section, just so we understand. And again, part of this, as Mr. Preston pointed out, was just the definition of what a bicycle rack is. And if council wants to clarify that, that might resolve a lot of the issue. I think the issue of interpretations.
Well, let's get that out of the way, because I think we're happy to make that technical fix to bicycle racks. I don't think there's any, yeah, so we will.
So right now, it's a device, a bicycle rack is a device consistent with industry standards that is capable of supporting a bicycle in a stable position and against the securing of the bicycle frame and one wheel with a U-shaped lock. So certainly, you can change that to say capable of supporting a bicycle, multiple bicycles in a stable position.
Sure. So we'll change that.
That would make it easier. A bike locker is a lockable enclosure consistent with industry standards that can hold one bicycle. It's made of durable material, is designed to fully protect the bicycle against the weather, provides secure protection from theft, no insufficient leak to allow bicycles to be accessed.
Why more bicycles for bicycle locker?
One per locker. But again, I'm.
Are we going? We need to change that as well.
Yeah, but in that case, you'd want one per locker for the security purposes.
You could have multiple lockers next to each other, but you wouldn't.
Okay, so we'll, we'll leave that. All right. Anybody else you have?
So I will, I'm going to add an amendment to the SADA to change that definition, to make it clearer that the intention is to allow multiple bicycles on a bike rack.
Okay.
And I'm starting to clarify that we think with multiple levels of bikes, because to your point, if you're using a bike as your primary form of transportation, you're going to be well versed in these multiple-level bike racks that you see all over Europe. That's who we're aspiring to be. I do think that one per bedroom in the maximum is a really progressive number. You know, maybe one for three, and it's like Philly is too high. Perhaps one per dwelling is more right size for Haverford. Kind of a compromise, and then change the language into those multiple dwelling units. And then at the same time, I think we can talk about how do we reexamine bike safety throughout Haverford for the short-term requirements. You know, for example, we're envisioning Station Circle. I think however places, John, perhaps we can ask you, you know, what are some places that would be safe to put bike parking under lights or patrol areas, et cetera, that we can adjust on the short-term bike parking, given the proximity of where this, this new development will happen downtown anyway?
Was there a suggestion to change the standard from, for basically right now, it's two per unit? I mean, either the higher of two per unit or one per better, to just make it flat, one per unit?
I would say, yes, I would be comfortable.
You said one for dwelling, and I wasn't sure.
One per unit, I'm sorry. One per unit. I'm sorry. I would be comfortable with that, one per unit. Which, again, I think one for three units is not right size for Haverford. At the end, changing the language so you can have the multiple rack.
I think we're using to clarify that the language related to not having it on multiple levels and accessible doesn't mean you can't have a bike rack on the first level, but have it as a multilevel. So you're not, you're not going up and downstairs.
No, correct. Yeah, beside you.
So I can, I can provide that unless Mr. Preston has something, I could also make that change easily. Just put some language in there to clarify that, and so.
Okay.
Todd has a suggestion about that particular issue, is this isn't a SADA, right? So it's a pretty easy process to clarify. So I think that it's more important to make sure that the baseline for putting a bike rack is solid and sound. If somebody comes in with a bike rack, and you all are convinced that it's a good solution, you can. you can just waive that.
They also allow, I think they also said veritable with a lot.
Well, I think we can also tell the county to take a look at it and, you know, advise us on how to.
Yeah, I think just providing the indication that that is contemplated and permitted. When someone is putting together a plan and determining on the space they need in the initial plan and not going to be running on waiver, might be helpful to, if that is your intention, to just clarify that.
Okay. All right. So I'm hearing that we would like to move higher than the one per three that Philly has. I, you know, I heard Cindy's suggestion of one per unit, and I think we have the other alternative, which is as it was originally contemplated by planning commission, which is two, sorry, two per unit or one per bedroom, whichever is higher. Anybody want to say anything at this point on your?
I'd be relaxed to go to just one per bedroom.
One per bedroom? So, okay, so we'll change the higher end one to one per bedroom. So either one per unit or one per bedroom.
It would be just say one per bedroom. Is it to one?
If it's a studio.
Right, but Cindy's proposal was one per unit, and change the proposal to one per bedroom. So like a two-bedroom would be two units versus one unit. So we still have two different.
But I think that points out it might be better because the studio would not have that.
That's zero. Okay, then that's zero. Okay. I mean, I think if you have one bedroom with one person that's there, it's not super likely that they're going to have two bicycles unless they're a real enthusiast.
So really the greater of one per unit or one per bedroom?
I guess.
How about a minimum of one per unit? You know, in case it is a studio? Sorry. Speaking of.
We're going to say bedroom, so that's why I'm saying. We appreciate your interest, Ken, but I think at this point we'll keep it to folks who are.
One per unit or one per bedroom. Ideally, going to have a bedroom per unit, except potentially a studio, but yeah, I think that that might still be considered a bedroom. So it might be redundant, but it's no harm.
Covers all bases.
Okay. So I think at this point, let's just do a show of hands. So Cindy's proposal is one per unit. People who prefer that definition of one per unit?
As opposed to what?
As opposed to one per bedroom or one per unit, whichever.
Or you could say one per bedroom with a minimum of one per.
Yeah, so you just said.
One per bedroom or one per unit, whichever is higher. That's the other. All right. So going back to one per unit?
I mean, I guess, yeah.
All right. One per bedroom or one per unit, whichever is higher? Okay, so we're going to show a hands. One per unit. People prefer one per unit. People prefer one per bedroom. Okay.
Yeah, provided, I'm sorry, provided we're putting in that multi, in that definition.
Yeah, we will, we will, we'll try to make it easier on the, to create dense bike infrastructure.
Yeah.
So I have that done. So we're going to change the definition of bike rack, clarify that multiple-level bike racks are not contemplated as being opposed, and the greater of one per unit or one per bedroom.
Okay. Any remaining issues for this piece of legislation? John, do you see anything that we still have to address?
None at this time. Again, I would like to make clear that the planning commission hasn't reviewed a number of the fine details of this, and they still didn't do so. But those were the issues that I thought were the most new and needing discussion.
Okay. Todd, is there anything that you see?
I don't really, myself, I think that's a, I think the.
Sure. All right. So let's talk a little about the path forward for this.
So the path forward is this needs to be submitted to both planning commissions before the 20th, which will be revised and out of the formal submission to Mr. Pressey in that regard, and then transmit to Mr. Gisardo to transmit through the system that the county does for their reviews. Assuming that there are no substantive changes recommended, that you want to follow. There could be substantive changes proposed, you can say, yeah, we don't want to do that. You, this ordinance would be then in a position for consideration for enactment at your July meeting, which includes on the 20th. If there are typos, and I've found a couple already, small word changes that don't really change substance, we can make those regardless without having to re-advertise. But if there is a substantive change related to the SALDO or zoning provisions that we're making, it would need to go back to both the planning commissions again for another 30 days to provide them with an additional review of those changes. So in a perfect world, we, there wouldn't be any substantive changes from the Narbor Planning Commission. They may have some cleanups, they may have some text changes that aren't substantive, or maybe it can wait. Because I guess I should note that there is another ordinance that will be shortly coming after this that is more of a catch-all zoning cleanup related to the enactment of the SALDO. There are more definitions that Chloe pointed out. There are more aspects that need to be changed. They just were not pertinent to 5A, 5B, individual building. So there would be time to provide any of those changes into that follow-up cleanup ordinance as well. If there wasn't a desire to do this for July meeting, then make those changes at a second ordinance. And I think the only reason the council might not want to do that is if the planning commission said, you don't want to get this in the books as is. That would be their recommendation after the meeting. So right now, it'll be submitted, it'll be reviewed at the planning commission meeting in July, and hopefully it'll be in a position for consideration at your July meeting and to discuss any changes.
For the Act 237 review, MCDC has to give back those 30 days.
Right.
Ideally, we'd like to submit it to them like tomorrow, because that's like, meetings are 35 days, so, yeah, just want to move on that.
Okay. Yep. All right. I do anticipate that we will get changes. This is a significant piece of legislation. It's been in motion, been changes made to it. So I suspect that we are going to see significant recommendations. All right. All that said, let's vote to advertise the green building 5A, 5B, some text amendments.
As amended.
As amended. All votes in favor? Okay, it's unanimous.
I'll make these changes and circulate the revised version, submit to the planning commission, submit to Mr. Gisardo tomorrow. So we have the initial pass, submit to the county.
I don't think I've done that before, has that it?
Yeah.
Okay. The monthly reports have been filed under a packet. Is there any new business or old business? Are there any comments for the good council? Excited to see the farmer's market today.
Sold out.
Yeah, they sold, well, she came by at like 5:30, and she was like, oh, there's nothing here. So, yeah, it was already pretty sold out by 5:30.
I was there by 4:45, it was pretty empty.
Yeah, so I think encouraging more vendors might be.
So bring them more next time.
I think it's also just worth underscoring that this is something that the office of council helped facilitate, and that Solicitor Walco helped to make sure that the volunteers who coordinated the farmer market were protected, that the FARA was indemnified, so if something happened, we were all protected. So a lot of coordination and staff time and Solicitor Walco's time went to making sure that this was done correctly with partnership with volunteers.
And that will continue to be Thursdays, 3 to 7 at Station Circle?
3 to 6.
3 to 7, if you want to get some.
They're going to bring more next year.
Yeah, they'll bring more.
3 to 7 if they reload.
Did they open Scoops or that's?
That is open.
Scoops is also.
It's open on the weekends, so school is let out.
They get some healthy vegetables and then some ice cream, and they balance. Is that the logic?
Yes. veggies and ice cream.
It's not open in the summer? In the summer? No, no, it's open in the summer. Oh, it's a full moon.
It's going to be open for three months. It's a three-month pop-up program.
It'll be open every day after school.
Yeah. It goes well after the creatures.
All right. Any other comments for the good council?
Just 4th of July is coming up, where all the committee has been working hard. We could use some more volunteers if anybody has time. It does not have to be a big commitment. And, you know, we can always use contributions because fireworks and vegetables cost a lot.
All right. We will have an executive session after this meeting to discuss the following. A potential matter of litigation regarding 201 St. Lane Avenue, disposition of borough property at 230 Havreford Avenue, potential litigation involving 118 Elmwood, personnel matter related to the hiring of a borough manager. Anything else? I don't think, I think that's it. And do not anticipate returning to session after the executive session. I'll take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second? Okay. All who's in favor of adjourned? Okay, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you. All right. And let's go ahead and recount on for the exec session. This is for the first system matter. We'll call it the. All right.
We'll go on to the other one?
We can stay in.
I believe we can stay. Can we take a two-minute break?
Thank you, John. Yeah, let's take it.
Fred, it doesn't look like recording has been stopped yet.